We'll start this by the time I'm done with the introductions, it should be right at seven o'clock. So, thank you everyone for attending the Berlin Select Board meeting. Today is Monday, October 4th. And it just turned seven o'clock. We have a virtual meeting in light of the COVID-19 pandemic. So, again, call to order, it is seven o'clock. Announcements, meeting of the Berlin Select Board are generally recorded for transmission on both the Berlin Cable Television Access Channel and YouTube. Your voice and image and/or phone number may be recorded. So, first up on the agenda are the approval of the September 27th, 2021 minutes. Questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Hold on a second.
All right, motion and second, Stone Eye?
Hawkins Eye.
Keith Eye.
All right, three oh, thank you so much. Moving down to correspondence, Ms. Margaret, anything to share today?
Yes, I'm probably gonna be sounding a lot like I did last week. We got several more letters of support for 19 Carter, and I think they have been, they've all been shared with the Select Board, whether they came in in hard copy or digitally.
Okay. For our folks that are in the audience, any general comments you would like to share? If so, please raise your hand, we're calling you, bring you on up to the front. I got nothing, so let us move right into our seven o'clock public hearing. The vote to ratify the tax collection, classification, rather, vote of nine twenty 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 one. It was, the hearing was opened on nine seven twenty twenty one and continued to nine twenty 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 one to complete the public hearing notice, so. Back open, Molly, I guess I'll turn it over to you.
So, we have to reopen the public hearing. Chris, do you still have the?
Me?
wording for that, you did it.
If you don't, I do.
Yes, I do, it's on the back of the agenda. Okay. Per Mass General Law, Chapter forty, Section fifty-six, the Berlin Select Board shall hold a public hearing on Monday, October 4th, 2021, at seven PM. At that time, the Select Board will meet jointly with the Board of Assessors to discuss and determine the certified valuation of each class of property, the minimum residential factor, and the allocation of the tax burden among the four classes of real property, residential, open space, commercial, and industrial, and personal property. The hearing will be held virtually on the Zoom meeting platform, flat form, with access as follows, and so on and so forth. Interested citizens may present oral feedback at the hearing or may send written comments to the board before the hearing by email or to, by US mail. Signed by Margaret Stone, our Scott Hawkins and Christine Keith.
Thank you, Chris. All right, Molly, do you have to open your meeting where you have your?
I posted that we were just joining your meeting.
Okay. All right.
So, we're all here by the looks of it, but.
Okay. So. We made, so, Mary just gave us, we love Mary. Can you do a roll call for you, Molly?
Yep, Kevin Pond?
Here.
Bev Wheeler?
Here.
Roger Bradley?
Here.
And I'm Molly, assessing director, here.
Good, thank you, thank you, Mary, for the nudge.
So, due to a little technical recap posting, we had to re-post the classification hearing. So, the values, did you? Did you get the stuff I sent out?
Yes.
Oh, all right. So, I only sent out the two slides that show the tax, sample tax bills, and then the what-if scenario for the recap sheet. So, we keep it at the one point nine, which is actually a point eighty-six residential factor. The the residential rate would be fifteen sixty-three. Open space would be fifteen sixty-three. Commercial would be twenty-seven eighteen. Industrial would be twenty-seven eighteen. And personal property would be twenty-seven oh-two. So, the new sample tax bills has been updated to reflect these.
All right. Chris Scott, any comments, questions on those changes?
No, not really.
All right, so, we'll start out with a vote. Last time I voted no, I'm still voting no, so Stone, no?
Well, wait a second. I just wanted to, for the select, I wanted to read you something. The selectman must determine the tax levy to be paid by each class of property. To do this, a residential factor needs to be adopted. A residential factor below one lowers the proportional share paid by the residential class and increases the share paid by the commercial, industrial, mixed-use, and personal classes of property. Voting a residential factor of one will maintain a single tax rate. To split the rate, the board would have to vote a residential factor below one. The board will vote to split the rate. The board has voted to split the rate since 2011. So, if you want to adopt the classic, the scenario that we just went over, it would be, I move that the board vote a residential factor of point eight-six-two percent. I just wanted to.
So, this is different than the vote we took last week, which was asking for a forty-nine percent offset.
Right.
Well, it's, it's what, it's still the one point four-nine, but the residential factor is, breaks down to being the point eight-six-two-oh.
Okay, so, point eight-six-two-oh basically keeps the same thing we voted last time.
Correct. So, I just, I didn't know clear last time what a no vote meant and a yes vote meant, so.
Oh, but a no vote just means no to this motion. My guess is that if the motion had failed, there would have been another motion to replace it.
Okay.
I don't think a no motion necessarily, no to this motion means that you want a single tax rate.
Correct, okay.
Can we make a motion just to ratify our votes of last week?
No, because, no, because we had to reopen the hearing.
Right.
So, you can, you can vote it at one point four-nine, it's, it's the same.
So, if they vote the residential factor of point eight-six-two-oh, that is, you could say a residential factor of point eight-six-two-oh, which is a CIP shift of one point four-nine.
Correct.
Okay, just clarifying, okay.
Thank you.
What do you want to say, Scott?
So. I was gonna say so, but, let's see. I think I've written down these numbers correctly. That, that we would live, move that we have a residential factor of point eight-six-two-oh, which is a CIP shift of one point four-nine, which is equal to what we attempted to do last time we attempted to have this hearing.
Second.
All right.
In the numbers and forgot to say second.
There you go, that was painful, all right. I'm gonna keep my vote as same as last week. Stone, no?
Hawkins Eye.
Keith Eye. Can you just, can you just sort of reiterate why you're voting no, Peg? I cannot remember.
Even though that the personal town, the values, that's the word that I'm looking for, thank you, took me long enough to figure it out. The values have gone up for residential and down a little bit for commercial. I still think that, you know, in order for me to keep commercial here to help do right by them a little bit, that I think that the burden should be shifted back, even though it's a small tidge, back to the residents. I know it's an impact to everybody regardless of where you sit, whether it's, you know, your own personal expenses or whether it's town business. I just wanted to swing it a little bit back towards those who have the values that have gone up on their houses. All right, do you need anything else from us, Molly?
That is the first, I think that's the first of four motions.
Yeah, okay.
So, I think the second motion is that we, I move that we do not accept a residential exemption, which is in line with what we've done in previous years.
Right, second.
Yep, so, we have a motion and a second, not to move towards single, Stone, I?
It's a move for a residential exemption.
Move towards residential exemption.
Right.
Okay, all right, so, Stone Eye?
Hawkins Eye.
Keith Eye.
All right, there we go.
I move that we actually accept a small commercial exemption, so that we accept, sorry, I was gonna try to read it off the whole thing, but it's not, I don't think it's worded great for a motion, so. But yes, I vote that we have the small commercial exemption for those. Assessed values must be less than a million dollars. And there's other, other.
And that's ten percent.
That's ten percent, thank you, yeah.
Second.
All right, motion and second, Stone Eye?
Hawkins Eye.
Keith Eye.
All right.
I do the last one, but I can't remember if we are, if we want the open space discount or we don't want the open space discount. We do not.
Not to, not to adopt.
Right, so, I move that we do not adopt the open space discount. Again, as we've done in previous years.
Second.
All right, I'll start, Stone Eye?
Hawkins Eye.
Keith Eye.
All right, Molly, three, nothing. So, the votes went two-one, three-zero, three-zero, three-zero. Is there anything else that you need from us?
Nope, I said I'd let you know if I do.
Margaret, do you think we're good? We caught everything?
Yes, yes, and I just, I recommend that if you're all set, that you close the hearing.
All right, Chris, over to you.
A motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to close the hearing, no other further questions, Stone Eye?
Hawkins Eye.
Keith Eye.
All right, motion is now closed, hearing is now closed. All right.
Thank you very much.
Kevin, be careful, I'll keep an eye on you.
Somebody needs to.
I will, don't worry, I got you. All right, thank you again. All right, just a wee past seven-ten. So, up next was the Veteran Service Officer Appointment of Mr. Sterns, who I think is in the audience.
Yes.
Yep, so if we can bring him up.
They shuffle, she's trying very hard not to shuffle you out, Peg. I think, I think we're taking greater time to not accidentally boot you into the audience.
That's okay, can always get in the car and run down and go hang out in Margaret's office. And there he is. All right, welcome, Brian, thank you for coming tonight, appreciate it.
Oh, thank you for having me, I'm sorry, my video doesn't seem to be working here.
That's all right, that's all right. All right, Margaret, do you want to do a little introduction on Brian?
Yes.
There he is.
Yes, Brian. So, so as you know, our Veteran Services Officer, Jim Cabral, resigned from employment with the town on September 30th due to regulations that were imposed by the Department of Veteran Services. So, following the Personnel Committee meeting two weeks ago, we posted the job advertisement on a bulletin board in the town offices for the required ten days, and that expired on October 2nd. One resume was received, and that was from Brian, who is with you tonight. Brian is from Northboro, I'll let him do his own introductions, but he has come to us highly recommended and extensively experienced in this field. So, welcome, Brian, and it's great to have you as a member of our, our team upon the board's appointment. So, if the board would like anything else from me, I'm, I'm happy to weigh in.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate your time, and thank you for having me, and I'm looking forward to being a part of the team. It's, I do have a lot of experience, about eighteen, almost eighteen years as a Veterans Officer, certified by the state. Fifteen years in the military, Desert Storm, Desert Shield, and host of other assignments throughout the world, and I'm just glad to be here. I'll take any questions you have.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
First of all.
Yes.
Absolutely. Chris Scott, any questions?
It sounds like quite the impressive resume, I think we'll be quite happy to have you in the town.
Indeed.
Yep, absolutely.
All right, see, so we have lots of questions for you there tonight, Brian.
Would you like, Brian, to give an overview of the services the Veteran Services Officer provides?
That would be great, that would be great.
Absolutely, well, our mainstay is the Chapter 115 program. It's, it's to help those in need that are veterans or widows or spouses of veterans, and that assist them financially through, with fuel, and I'm sure you know the whole process of the Chapter 115 program. But we do have a couple of veterans and widows on the program in Berlin already. That is one of our main things, that is reimbursed by the state seventy-five cents on the dollar. So, every dollar we spend in Berlin, then seventy-five cents comes back, being on carry sheets each, each year. So, that, that is a bonus for us to come back to the, to the state. Funerals, funerals are another thing, now they're reimbursing a hundred percent on funerals, so. That's another good thing for us and for the town. We try to save the town as much money as we can possibly, as possible. Very conservative in our approach, but we're also very liberal in making sure that those that need the benefits get the benefits. So, that being said, our other part of that is working with the VA. And VA has the healthcare system, it's sort of separated into two silos, the healthcare system and the benefit system. Anybody that's eligible through VA is going to be a veteran. They have to be a veteran, the spouse or, you know, they're not a veteran, so they're not eligible for VA healthcare. However, VA benefits, the compensation portion of it is if, if a veteran has a service-connected illness or injury as a result of his time in the service, not necessarily a war, but just in service, then he is eligible or she is eligible for VA compensation. Now, if a veteran is compensated at a hundred percent and was to pass away, then the spouse becomes eligible for what's called DIC, and that's death and indemnity compensation. So, we work in tandem with the VA, with the state, and with our veterans and our widows and spouses, to make sure that all of them are covered under the state law. So, that's kind of in a nutshell. We do a lot of other things, we, we do, I do have a program that I offer through Hudson, a transportation program for the hospitals, for the VA hospitals at no charge to our veterans and their caretakers, may it be a spouse or just a caretaker. And we take them to the hospitals for no charge, because we do have a transportation issue in this, in this region, obviously. Lack of transportation. Well, that's one of the things that I developed in Hudson, and that is extended out to Berlin, Bolton, Stowe, and Maynard. So, we're, we're trying to take care of our, our veterans in the best way we can, and with your help, I'm sure it's gonna be a continuation of what Jim's done in the past.
That's wonderful.
Any questions?
No, I have none.
That's great.
All right. Is there a motion on the floor?
I, I would make it if I knew the wording is, is, I think, the wording is that we are approving Margaret's recommendation, or are we actually doing the appointment?
Approving Margaret's recommendation.
Yeah.
So, I would move to approve Margaret's recommendations as Brian Sterns is the new Veterans Officer, or Veterans Benefit Officer for the town.
Second.
All right, motion and a second, I'll start, Stone Eye?
Hawkins Eye.
Keith Eye.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, so.
Absolutely. All right, well, that was an easy peasy one. So, we have a public hearing at seven-thirty, so we'll kind of skip down. I see Mr. Fred in the audience. Margaret, do we want to do the General Department Updates or skip down to TA Report, Old Business?
She.
You're on mute. Oh.
My TA, my TA report wouldn't consist of much if I was on mute. I, I have a very light TA report tonight, it's really all HR-focused, so.
Okay.
If you want me to just kind of, if you want me to just do my TA report?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so, first of all, I spent much of last week doing HR-related things. We're going through multiple hiring processes, as you know. And so, I was participating in three different interview processes last week. I expect to advertise the eighteen-seventy, and a few of these are gonna be coming to you tonight. I do have notices of intent on two positions tonight for you. I expect to advertise the eighteen-seventy Town Hall Manager position and the Permanent Wiring Inspector position later this week after Personnel Committee meets and reviews those job ads. For the Police Chief, resume screening is underway for twenty-one applicants. We received twenty-one resumes, and the panel consists of five individuals, including two Massachusetts Police Chiefs. The team or the panel has until this Friday, October 8th, to complete their individual top ten rankings, and I will be compiling those into the narrowed list of candidates, which will then be forwarded to Municipal Resources Incorporated for review. MRI will conduct preliminary background checks and conduct interviews of the highest-ranked candidates to ultimately narrow the field to the top three or four candidates who will participate in an assessment center, which consists of about three exercises to measure knowledge, skills, and abilities in the position. And this is going to help us further narrow the field to present only the top, the top-rate candidates to the Select Board for interviews. The board will have the opportunity at that point to make a conditional offer of employment after you conduct your interviews. And after a conditional offer of employment is made and accepted, MRI will conduct a comprehensive background investigation on the candidate who has, who has accepted a conditional offer of employment. So, due to the anticipated timeline for this process, I expect to be submitting a recommendation to the board before the end of this month for Acting Police Chief until a permanent chief is appointed. On this Council on Aging Director, Victoria has been working on updating her job description. I've sat with her a few times. This is to incorporate social service duty, social services duties in addition to her regular COA duties for an expansion of her position temporarily in FY twenty-two to be funded from our ARPA funding. This is a qualified expense, and there are social service needs out there. So, again, she's working on updating a job description into a draft that Personnel Committee will review the updates on. I'm also working on dispatcher negotiations with the Neshoba Valley Regional Dispatch District, and the hiring process from their new Executive Director is also underway. And just one little side note, I have been, I, I already serve as an alternate member on the Mass Managers, I'm sorry, Massachusetts Managers Association Ethics Committee, and I've been promoted to serve as a full member. This is a committee that meets very seldomly and only when there's an ethics issue, so. It's not, it's not a huge drain on my time, and it's an honor to serve on a committee that is, is focused on, on ethics, and that's all I have for today.
Awesome, any questions, any limited questions for Mrs. Natalie?
No, I'm happy to hear that none of these are moving forward and.
Yes.
Because I think filling these, although the HR stuff now is definitely a drain, filling these will be less of a drain in the long run, because you won't have people who, either, and yourself having to fill in for all these vacancies.
I hope so, that's the goal.
I continue on the conversation, Margaret, you and I had, just how we as a, both, as a town as a whole, I don't think it all falls to you, is think about how we make these hiring processes more nimble, and especially at the current environment, it's the, the early bird gets the worm. First to get the best candidates, we can't have a six or eight-week hiring process. You really have to find a way to shorten it, and I see in the agenda today is I, I see attempts to shorten some of those processes a little bit, which I think is good.
Yeah, we're trying, we want to abide by the Act and, you know, our established procedures. At the same time, we want to move.
All right, we still have about six minutes before the public hearing comes up for TGI Fridays, so we can scoop down to old business. The first one hopefully won't take long, is to discuss and decide Berlin Representation at the October twenty-sixth, Berle and Boylston Regional School District School Committee Meeting to select a bargaining representative for the towns of Berlin and Boylston.
So, after, you know, after I brought this to the board's attention, after we received this notice, you know, I, I did wonder what Chief Executive Officer meant, because in most standard definitions or statutory definitions, that would be the Select Board. And in our Act, it's the Select Board. But in regionals, in the Code of Massachusetts Regulations, there's a slightly different definition. However, Susan Henry has clarified that it could be the Town Manager Administrator or the Select Board Chair or a designee. I would be more than happy if a Select Board, if a Select Board Chair or Designee would be willing to go to this meeting, if not, I will be the default. And this meeting is gonna be, the school committee meeting is gonna be on October twenty-sixth.
Virtual or in-person, Margaret, do you know?
Great question. I don't have the posting in front of me, it doesn't specify on the letter, so I'd have to look at that.
Okay, no worries, Chris Scott, any interest?
I just don't have availability at the moment.
I've definitely done it before. I, I guess I wouldn't mind doing it if you're not interested and Margaret's not dying to do it.
Yeah.
I think you have some of the best experience there, Chris, too, as being a former school board.
They, they might shudder when they find out it's me.
All right, Chris, ready, rock, paper, scissors, one, two, three, go. Okay, you win. I did scissors, Chris did rock, rock versus scissors. So, I, Chris, I guess you're it, not it.
I, I don't, I don't mind.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I've got the evening free.
Okay.
Thank you.
If not, then, Chris, let me know, and I will juggle around my schedule, so that's not a, that's not a problem. So, Margaret, you're third in line, but between, but between Chris and I, we've got this.
Okay.
All right, cool, all right, so, seven-twenty-seven, we still have a few minutes left. Town Meeting warrant review, that'll take too long. Margaret, your stuff will take too long.
I have.
No, I think we could, we could, we could do so with the hiring.
The Temporary Conservation Agent is a very straightforward one.
Okay, go.
We, yep, we have a contingent office offer, offer of employment, and we also have an acceptance of that, and I would love to move forward on the hiring process for this position. As I explained, it, we have offered the position to Maddie Vandenboom of Hudson. She has a wonderful wildlife conservation background. She is experienced in bird banding, she's done research on the Asian Longhorn Beetle, and she's actively doing research on that. And she is becoming a certified arborist and probably will be a certified arborist by the time that she starts with us. The anticipated start date is November 1st. Hourly rate would be twenty-seven seventy-seven, as advertised, which is grade eight, step five. And her payrolls will consist of the specified funding sources from which her hours are worked. She's gonna be great, and I can't wait to introduce her to the board when she comes aboard.
Okay, has she met the conservation folks?
Only the chair so far.
Okay, Carolyn, okay.
Yep.
All right, any questions or comments for Margaret?
I think we're, I'm fine with appointing, or, I forgot the right wording. I, I don't think we need to wait any longer, I think it's okay to approve this.
You'll just approve, then you'll just affirmatively approve my notice of intent to appoint.
Yes, I affirmably approve your notice to appoint to Acting Conservation. Acting, right?
All right, motion and a second, no other questions, Stone Eye?
Hawkins Eye.
Keith Eye.
There you go, Margaret, one down, all right, and we are just at seven-thirty. So, Chris, also on the back of the. So Chris, uh, also on the back of the agenda is number two, uh, public hearing notice. So if you want to open with that, and then if there's anyone in the audience to bring up for TGI Fridays, we can do that as well.
Okay, um, pursuant to the provisions of Chapter one thirty-eight of the Mass General Laws, as amended, an application has been made and information is given for approval of a transfer of a Section twelve annual all alcohol restaurant license for sales service consumption on premises from GC Fridays Boston LLC currently doing, currently licensed as Berlin two oh two one dash two-three and A B C C zero 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 seven R S zero zero nine four to TGI Fridays Inc., doing business as TGI Fridays, licensed premises located entirely within the Solomon Pond Mall, uh, Berlin, Mass, with mail address of six oh one Donald Lynch Boulevard, Marlborough, Mass, and a change of local license manager to Nicole Crosby. The premises are described as followed. I don't know if I need to read all this, do I? Hearing on the above application will be held on Monday, October fourth at seven thirty PM. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to attend, the virtual meeting may attend via the Zoom webinar. There we go. All interested parties should plan to attend.
Mary, can you please bring up Nicole? She's in the audience as well. And she comes. Good evening, Nicole. Good evening, Al. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it.
Good evening.
Good to see you.
Nice, nice to see you all. Thank you very much. Uh, as it says, my name is Al DiNapoli. I'm the attorney for TGI Fridays. We have an application before you for the transfer of the liquor license at, at what is Fridays now, which is presently owned and operated by GC Boston Fridays LLC. Um, back about five years ago, six years ago maybe now, um, TGI Fridays had sold most of its, uh, East Coast franchises to this Florida organization. About a year and a half ago, they decided for one reason or another to take them all back, um, being Massachusetts Council for TGI Fridays. I was involved in transferring them back from the present licensee back to TGI Fridays Inc. Um, we've completed, um, all twelve of those. Five had never been transferred, so I didn't have to do them. Uh, this is the last one to be completed. Um, I had sent in an earlier, uh, application, and I asked the Board uh, for waiver of some of the more specific town, uh, requests since this had been approved by the A B C C and had been approved by a number of the towns or municipalities already. In any event, um, I have completed the application again, uh, with all the, um, requirements of the town specifically and, uh, the A B C C. I have that before you. You have the queries of everyone that's necessary. Uh, and basically, it's, it's, it's a similar package that has been approved, like I said, by twelve other municipalities in Massachusetts, the last one. Since the time that I started this, there were a few changes to some of the, um, offices. So I had to update that with your application, so there are more actually queries in your application than were in previous ones. Uh, Nicole, who is joining us, has been the manager there, and I believe she had been proved under the other license. But since we're looking to transfer here, uh, she's, she's joining us as to whether you have any questions for Nicole too, but she's been operating there. So essentially, this is a, a corporate, uh, change. Uh, nothing's going to really change, uh, at the location, except for I will operate more under the auspices of TGI Fridays than the franchise owner at that time.
Um, so Mary Margaret, uh, God, that sounds like a nun. Mary Margaret.
I think I had her in school.
Or did you have Margaret Mary?
That's right. They, they switched. Um, so have you received any type of like comments, feedback or anything from anybody in town? No concerns on this? I see Mary doing that.
No, Mary has confirmed that the local reviews have been completed, so all local reviewers have seen this and commented.
Except I thought Eloise's review said there was an expired business license.
Right, and at this point, you probably wouldn't want the current license holder to bother doing it.
Right, right.
But what, yeah, you could make it subject to them getting a fresh, doing business as or business certificate attorney to Napoli with the Town Clerk's Office.
Yes, and I was gonna wait that, as again, since GC Fridays is the common, like, say, they didn't want to do that. But once we get through this process, uh, I plan to do that.
Okay. Now, double check to make sure the workers comp affidavit and the liquor license, I think we already have all that in hand, but that should be fine with the transfer. We would want to reference that it's now licensed at this address, that the, um, TGI Fridays Inc.
Okay, I'll coordinate with you, Mary, if that's okay, uh, to, to make sure that all that is done. And I, I did send out the abuddies notices to all the abuddies in Berlin as well as Marlborough because the mall, basically, as you all know, uh, is part in Marlborough, so the abuddies are of the mall. So we did, I, I do have, uh, five new green cards that came in today. They came in today. Um, I would have brought them with me, but, um, can't do it. Uh, Mary, should I send these up to you?
Yep, and I received your other package today by FedEx, so thank you. Yes. Awesome. Uh, Scott, Chris, any questions for Al or Nicole?
There's no conflict, it's just because I like eating there, right? I, I will make a wish that we approve the transfer, uh, with the hopes that the business certificate gets done shortly thereafter.
Chris?
Um, I don't, I was gonna second it. Do you want me to add that? And the, um, proposed new manager would be Nicole Crosby?
Sure.
Okay.
That's friendly.
Okay, and then I'll second that.
Alright, uh, one motion in a second. We'll start the vote. Stone eye.
Hawkins' eye.
Keith's eye.
There you go, Nicole and Al.
Nice seeing you all, and best wishes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you both for coming.
Thanks.
Alright, uh, still a little bit early for the department update.
Yeah, but that doesn't have to be time certain, does it?
Yeah, I, yeah, Peg, I think that, um, I think that promoting him for his update, um, will be fine. It's not a hearing, so.
Alright, come on up to the front, Fred. You're the next contestant at the Select Board meeting. Nice. Nice to see you, Fred. How are you? Alright, we can see you. We can hear you. Alright.
Alright, perfect. Um, so this obviously being the first one, I'm not sure where to start, but we're just, uh, I guess by old, maybe. Um, um, so just for the old business, what we had was, uh, we received all the quotes for the loader repairs. Um, and then one company was selected, which was Woodco, to perform the repair. Um, they did do it, and they sent it back. We received it back on, um, September eighteenth. Um, and it's actually been put back to work. Um, so the mower is attached to it, and it's starting to work the road again. Um, also one of the new business, the old business, we had, uh, the parking lot there at the municipal center, the fire station was repaved, relined. Um, we still have some work there to do. We were just hoping to get a lot more colder days to get the hot top to cure before we put a dump truck on it to backfill the edges.
It's so much better to drive on, though.
Yeah, well, we're actually wondering how it's gonna plow, because as you can see, like, on the rainy days, they really have the water pitched almost to a V going to the basins. Um, so we hope we don't mark it up too bad with the, uh, the snow plows as it, angles as it goes. Well, we'll probably find that out shortly, hopefully.
Shortly, Fred, Fred.
No, yeah, I know.
Already.
That's a jinx.
Um, so for under the new business, um, like I said, we, we got the loader back on the eighteenth. Um, and now there's a new thing. Um, there's a new regulation for water testing that's in addition to the water sampling that we have done now at the library and the Public Safety Building. Um, it's a, it's a new PFAS regulation that's come out. Uh, Whitewater is the company that serves as our water operator, and they're the one that sent that out. Um, the thing with that is, um, the three wells that we have in town, the school, the library and the town hall, they're considered the, um, TNC is transient non-community wells because they don't service, uh, ten thousand people or more. Um, so we actually are gonna start our testing. Our first initial test has to be before September of twenty twenty-two. They started this month with the, um, the bigger cities because they service more. Um, the only problem with that is it comes with the cost of an additional up to two thousand dollars, um, which I'm sure wasn't obviously figured into the budget for the water testing. Um, so that could be a burden, uh, if that comes true. If.
And we have a name for those unfunded mandates.
My favorite known as Margaret's headaches.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Um, so if we get, um, the first initial test is a negative, uh, they'll do another quarterly test. If that two comes back negative, then we can actually apply for a waiver, which will then just be like a, a test every three years. Um, but then save some money. Um, but the only ones that we're actually liable for on our half is just the library and the town hall. Um, the school has been taking care of their own testing. Um, and the way that works as well is they have to take that on a separate day, uh, as the water samples, because that could send out to a different laboratory. Um, so that's something that's gonna be happening soon. Um, I can actually send the link out, so if you all want to learn more about the PFAS and, and the test.
But was it PFAS what got Hudson in trouble? Didn't Hudson find some, so, they had some chemical they found that's not regularly tested?
That I'm not sure of, because even, uh, Ben from Whitewater, the gentleman who actually services us, um, it's, it'll be new to them, so they're still learning the process and how to unroll it to all the communities for the testing part.
Um, many municipalities are finding PFAS in certain water sources, so, um, let's hope it's not us, though.
And we're getting some private wells in town are tested for this now too, isn't it? Isn't that part of the grant program? We're gonna hear if there's any results from any of those, aren't we?
Yes, and I don't think DEP has rolled out their PFAS testing program. Our CAPS, uh, general well testing program was supposedly happening last month, and I haven't gotten any, any updates on that yet. Good point.
There's no, we're, I, I thought we were testing soon for PFAS here, but maybe.
Yeah, I think that, weren't they waiting to do PFAS after the, um, D cap was finished?
Yeah, DEP didn't want to overlap and create confusion between the two testing programs, so, yeah.
It's very easy to get confused. I'm confused. Thanks, I for to continue.
That's where I'm at too. I'm confused about it. But we'll, we'll learn it. Um, so that was just one of them. Um, so we, the members of the department ended up signing up for the autism awareness training. Um, so that's something we did. We had the first meeting, uh, earlier in the month, and the subsequent ones are, well, one this month, one in November. Uh, and that'll finish up, and that was through Mia. Um, and like Margaret was saying earlier, um, we had the resignation of Mike earlier in the year, uh, earlier in the month. His last day was on the ninth. So that dropped us back down to three people. Um, and then there was, uh, one of our part-time employees, uh, had to leave. Um, so then we had, uh, undertake his duties as well. Um, so little by little, like, it drops us a little bit further behind. Um, but we're trying to keep up with what we can, and the biggest part of our thing is, uh, actually the cemeteries. Um, last, last month, um, or for the month of September, uh, sixty-nine, uh, work hours, man-hours were used in the cemetery. Uh, so we haven't been able to get out on the roads and actually start the mowing program. Um, or even keeping up with things like that, because that was taking up a lot of the time. Um, but now, with Mac coming in, um, we can actually get a little bit more of the actual highway work done as we go. Um, because in that time, like, we walk to the, uh, town hall and just start, uh, finishing up jobs that he had started, um, so they weren't such a hazard. Um, and then another thing that we had was, uh, the loader controls for the, the new L seventy H floater, um, came in, uh, and that too, it's just waiting to find time, so we can actually install the controls. Should happen, uh, hopefully within the next month. Um, but the idea of that is if the other loader breaks down again, um, this one can be put right in the service to continue the mowing process. Um, and then just under the, the new business, we had that extra, um, interviews for the driver labor position. Uh, there were twenty-two that put in for it. We ended up interviewing two. Um, one of them had a family issue and couldn't make it. Um, but the offer, like Margaret was saying, um, was offered to Matt. Matt finally accepted today. Uh, so hopefully we can get him coming, but he's like three weeks out, according to him. Employee. Um, and then the only addition that we had for, uh, the concerns was the added cost for the testing, um, that wasn't in the budget for last year. Um, and the total impact for our budget for the month was the loader expense. That ended up being forty thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and change. Um, so that we'll be paying Wednesday of this month, uh, so we can, uh, finish that off. Um, and then just over the overall summary, um, I'll just read it for you so that we can hear. Um, so early in the month, we had dodged the two tropical depressions, uh, with over four inches of rain. Um, we came out pretty clean because we didn't have any major flooding or washouts or a lot of wind damage. Um, there was that one tornado that touched down in Marlborough and then resurfaced again and landed in Bolton. Uh, that was on the east side of town. I, I won't chalk it up to being part of that, but we had, um, some, three substantial limbs come down on Gates Pond Road. Um, might have just been from wind damage or just the dead trees down that way. Um, and then throughout the rest of the month, we spent doing the small engine repair. And, uh, early in the month, uh, three of the guys put together some mailboxes for the town hall. Um, and got that out of the way, and then they removed the carpet for the, uh, eighteen seventy Town Hall. Um, we actually set a goal for ourselves, uh, the upcoming month. We're gonna try to get back into the roadside mowing program, um, getting the road edges filled in. Um, and we've had a couple more complaints for some of the hazard trees that we actually just went and looked at, two of them today on Allen Road. Um, so we're seeking out to see what other tree companies will come into town. Um, years ago, we used to have Dillon Tree come in, so we reached out to them to see if we can get a quote per hour or for days, um, for them, uh, because we already have the one that we use now with Fabro. Uh, so we're gonna try to see if we can get the most bang for the buck, uh, because the budget is pretty small for tree removal. Um, and that's where we are just for the month so far. Uh, towards the end of the month, we're gonna start getting the snow plow frames put back on, uh, in hopes for a, a busy winter.
No.
Quiet winter, quiet.
No, quiet winter, Fred. Quiet. No, no.
When, when we had highways start taking up, uh, some cemetery stuff, I thought the intent was to expand. Now, I know personnel is probably the reason why, but the intent wasn't, uh, cemetery wasn't subsidizing highways as much as, uh, the adding the cemetery was to expand the, the capacity of highway, correct?
Yes.
And so it's just a matter, we've not been able to hire fast enough to keep ahead of it is, is the reason why it's still such a drain.
Yes, exactly.
Um, and with the hire that we, we, we have on the agenda to approve later, um, does that put us back to full staffing? What is that, what is, what are the remaining vacancies then?
Um, so the, the gentleman that might get hired now is just to fill the spot of the, uh, of Mike who left on the ninth. So that'll bring us up to, uh, the foreman and three workers, and, and it's just the superintendent slot. And then, then we're full staff.
Um, except for the part-time.
The part-time that just left.
Buildings and facilities. Um, so we, we really need to look at that and how we could possibly restructure uh, in a cost-effective way to add that, add that manpower to highway.
Right, and we're still looking at staffing that adds some admin support as well, correct? So we should think that next year's budget is likely to be higher than, than this is, but because we've not grown that department in a long time. Um, and it should have additional resources if we really want to keep the, the buildings and highways and other stuff in town in good shape.
Alright, any other questions for Fred? Well done on your first, uh, report.
Yeah.
Fantastic findings. Well done.
Thank you. Um.
Questions, Chris?
No, I think, I think he covered it. Sounded good.
No, and I think, I think that's not really in this report that we've asked at other parts. I think it's not in the, it's a tiny, tiny thing. Uh, uh, is, I kind of don't think I've done many, is when other departments are asking the Highway Department to do things, and you do favors other places, we just want to be able to know that because, you know, sometimes, uh, I think the town accidentally doesn't get some highway stuff done because we're helping out so many other places. Because we're helping out so many other places, uh, and, and all good reasons, but trying to make sure the right priorities are there and that. You know, Fred, Margaret is supporting uh, the department well enough with helping with priorities and filtering some of those, so we don't overwhelm the staff too much.
Yeah, well, we only had one request for assistance, that was for council on aging, and that was to hang some hooks up down in the rooms. Uh, but that, and Friday. So that's something we were hoping to do today, uh, but she wasn't working today, and I'd asked, you would like put a sticky note wherever she wanted the hooks. When I went down there, it was just that first choice.
I could take care of the sticky notes for you.
Absolutely.
This is great.
Awesome. Right, well, thank you, Mr. Fred, we appreciate you, appreciate everything that your uh, team is doing to keep Berlin and no wishes for a bad winter. Thank you very much, because Fred, you have a knack, I think you plow my road. I am out there, I applied snow blow, and I hear the truck coming from Linden, and I'm like, Fred, and up you come. And I'm like, so if you could call me next time, let me know. That would be great.
And then drop you off when we're done.
Oh, great, thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah, and I wanna thank, I wanna thank Fred and Jim and Dylan uh, for all hanging in there during this, during this tough, challenging time.
Yep, and if you need anything from us, Fred, you know, you know where the four of us are located, so we're here to help you.
Oh yeah, we'll keep plugging.
Thank you, Mr. Fred. All right, uh, do, 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 so down to all, I think that takes care of all the meetings, yep. So back on old business, November eighth, twenty twenty-one, special town meeting warrant reviewed.
Yep. That is right, so I numbered articles just to see how many there are, fourteen. Fourteen, uh, currently, um, you know, some of these articles would take longer um, to discuss a town meeting than others, obviously. But I just wanted to kind of uh, fill you in up, after you meet tonight, um, this is when I actually submit the draft warrant to town council. To do their thorough legal review, and so I just wanted to go over the, these uh, these most recent things that I um, have marked up here. First of all, I have added summaries where summaries were, um, where summaries were absent, and I've edited a couple. One of the, um, as you know, the mod, the third modification of development agreement, article three. Um, we want to, I wanna be sure that we make it clear that the purpose of this article is strictly to extend. Um, established deadlines um, in the development agreement and uh, modifications. Um, so in the summary, I have written, um, I have written that, and I've tried to clarify um, the specific. Uh, deadlines that are extended. I should say, however, that our working group did not discuss um, the improvements. To the Pleasant Street and South Street intersection, or the Pleasant Street and Sawyer Hill Road intersection. Um, however, it's not going to hurt us to extend those deadlines to twenty twenty-four. Those actually, those two items are based on a um, completed developed square footage um, threshold. Uh, more so than this um, date of twenty twenty-one, these would not have been due um, this December. So they would have been due in uh, phases four and five of the development agreement. So board's prerogative um, as to whether or not you wanna keep those in here, or let them, you know, stand alone outside of this article. And um, stay with the phase four and five deadlines um, that they, that they had.
I just couldn't remember, Margaret, um, whether the group had discussed.
I don't, and so I don't, I don't recall discussing those two.
Yeah, I didn't have my notes, and, you know.
The reason we didn't, I think, is because neither of those were due December eleventh of this year, and the other, the other things were.
Right, so, so this would take something that is based on square footage completion and put a date on, is what.
It would put a date on it, there is a, um. You know what, I don't have it in front of me, I don't have the date or the square footage, I should have had it in front of me tonight, but I don't. Um, I can email that to the board uh, tomorrow, and I can consult with town council on whether or not that stays in. You know, if it appears that we were gonna, that we're gonna hit a deadline um, before, um, you know, we discuss any provisions further than. Um, it, I don't see that it's gonna hurt.
Yeah, it might be good just to get town councils. On whether to, to leave it in or not.
Right, okay. Um, the other thing on article four, this is the authorization of, this is asking town meeting to authorize the board to petition the general court for special legislation. For two additional section fifteen all alcohol licenses, um, so I have summarized. Under that article that the town is at its quota of those licenses, um. I'm in the red line, I shouldn't even be in the red line, cuz I can't follow it.
But I was trying to find a copy that didn't have red lines in it, so I could figure out what it's gonna look like when it's all done, but yes.
Yeah, um, I did, I did upload a clean one in there, so let me see if I can find. This, okay, so this uh, this summary reads, the article would allow the select board to petition the legislature for an increase. In the number of section fifteen all alcohol retail licenses that could be issued in the town of Berlin. Currently, the town has issued its quota two, is that right, Mary? Quota of two? Yep, okay, it's quota of two of these licenses and is unable to issue additional licenses without legislative approval. Simple as that. Um, I have sent off the cemetery commission regulations draft article to. Um, to the cemetery commission, I do believe that additional language is needed here, and I think town council's gonna advise the same. That the um, the regulations themselves should actually be on file with the town clerk, so I have added that language in the article. Um, but I don't have, I don't think I have the full. There are standing rules that the commission uses, and I don't know that um. Um, that those are the actual regulations they're seeking uh, town meeting approval on. Um, while, uh, June did give me some special articles to be closed out, and I have filled those in under article six. Um, it's a total of twenty-two, twenty-nine, almost thirty thousand dollars in um, article, special article closeouts. The capital planning committee is meeting tomorrow night on the supplemental FY twenty-two capital budget items. Uh, there is still a blank under the old fire station EPDM roof replacement. Uh, that's because we have the contractor coming this week, I thought it was maybe tomorrow, coming to uh, provide a proposal on that. And ideally, what I'd like to do is I would like to bundle that with the um, uh, the town offices roof. Um, so that we can get more bang for our buck and have two of the membrane roofs done at the same time. Uh, capital planning to uh, committee is also gonna be reviewing.
You're thinking then uh, that item one and two under the ca- the capital budget would be combined together?
No, 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 I'm sorry, no, I, I didn't make that clear, we've already appropriated, the town meeting has already appropriated funds to replace the roof of the town offices. Um, item one on this capital, item one of this capital budget is needed because the appropriation voted in the spring. Is not sufficient to cover the cost of the HVAC, the air handler replacement. So additional funding is needed under the energy performance contract for that. Um. Uh, the highway, uh, you know, adding, I'll mention since we're um, um, going through this list. Uh, the twenty nineteen, twenty, two thousand nine ambulance replacement was scheduled um, for, was going to be tentatively put on the spring twenty twenty-two. Town meeting warrant, but chief has reported that there are, um, there have been some mechanical issues with that ambulance. And he would like to at least get started on the build of the new ambulance, that could take six months uh, to complete, so he'd like to get started on that. And then finally, highway hot talk, uh, this is being requested because this exact amount was requested back in the, at the annual town meeting in twenty nineteen. That came with a sunset clause, which has since expired, so this is really just to replenish the money um, that would be used to supplement chapter ninety funds. It's not an additional amount um, beyond what was voted at um, at the annual town meeting this year. And then Community Preservation Act proposed projects, um, the CPA committee has submitted five articles. Uh, for funding uh, from the Community Preservation Act, the first is for four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Uh, for acquisition of um, open space, it's the, the so-called Laura property. On Linden and Lyman. Uh, the next article would be uh, uh, to appropriate seventy. Um, well, actually, a hundred thousand dollars um, to do the Bullard House Foundation work. And then the next article would be to um, to have a professional imaging done of two inventory notebooks. Um, so I think there's five thousand dollars total requested for that one. Um, and the next article is uh, for uh, upgrades of the town's recreation courts. Um, that is a total requested, I believe it's a hundred thousand dollars from CPA. Um, and I, I need to talk with the CPA chair regarding additional funding in order to cover the cost of that project, I do believe that the uh, cost. Um, is greater uh, than the amount that's proposed to be funded from CPA, so we need to uh, and I'll, consult with town council too. Um, regarding additional funding sources for that. And then finally, um. The Recreation Committee wants to construct an announcement booth uh, for twenty thousand dollars for the baseball field. And they want an electronic scoreboard to go with that, so each of those articles comes with its own just project description. Um, what we're working on.
Basketball court and a tennis court's a hundred thousand dollars, and how?
Oh, it's gonna be more, it's gonna be more than a hundred thousand dollars, I believe it's gonna be more like a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
And how often does this have to get done?
Excuse me?
I mean, we're gonna be redoing this every five years, a hundred thousand dollars?
No, this is done since it was built, I don't think, except for some.
Yeah, the courts are in really poor.
Really poor shape.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'm way old, and those are probably the same courts that, you know, I played on when I was ten. So, uh, yeah, except as Chris said, you know, the filling in the cracks, which makes it fun to play tennis, I don't think that they've been touched in a very long time.
There may be something that we should have been doing, and keep them in better shape.
Probably. Well, I mean, it needs to be repaved too, I mean, besides, you know, putting the new service, it tilts down. So if you're playing tennis and your back is to the pond, all the balls roll this way, so it's not even, it's not level.
Yeah, somebody has the advantage.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, so no, Scott, I can't see it as a, you know, every five years or things like that, and maybe that's something that. Uh, you know, if it gets approved, that can be asked of the people that are doing it, what do they recommend for upkeep? So we're not running into this fast forward ten years from now, when, you know, there might be a new board, and this question comes back up again.
Yeah, that's a great point, it's not build it and forget it, and, you know, and it shouldn't be that way with any of the capital projects, so that's good, good point. Um, the next article was proposed by the uh, police chief and fire chief. Um, this is accepting the pr- one sentence um, in Mass General Law Chapter thirty-two, section uh, four two B. Which would expand the existing five-year cap on creditable, on service, prior service credits. For uh, firefighters and police officers who previously, um. Who previously served on an intermittent call capacity and have since um, become career personnel. I actually submitted an email to, um, while I don't believe there are, um. Uh, there are cost uh, impacts to the town because of this, this is credible service, um, and a payout from the retirement system. I did wanna confirm, so I've reached out to the executive director at the Worcester Regional Retirement System. Um, uh, to make sure that there aren't any kind of unseen uh, cost impacts on the town.
Because that re- that retirement is paid for by us, that money comes from us. And so if there's more people getting more money, I, I still don't get, someone ought to explain to me, more people getting more money somehow has no cost impact.
Right, so this is actually credible service, the question then becomes, do we base the credit? I mean, are we paying an assessment, this is my question for Michael Sacco, the executive director. Is our assessment based on the credible, credible service our employees have in the system? Or is it based on the income of all of our employees that, at, well, active employees that we're putting into the system? So I need to, I, I need clarification from him.
I, I believe because we're backfilling for previous years, i- is that, that uh, it is sort of what, what we owe everyone. Whoever is drawn from it and ever will draw from it, and I still think people drawing more money at earlier has to have a fiscal impact.
Well, I'm waiting for that.
Only has impact on retirement, this has no impact on like seniority pay, or anything else like that from a payroll standpoint. So, this will have no, I want to like, this will have no impact on anybody's actual pay. Like grades or, or years of service, seniority, or vacations, or all the stuff like that.
Right.
I mean, I'm saying I, I would oppose it if it did, but I want to go into this knowing what the fiscal impacts are.
Yes, yes, so I'm waiting for an answer on that, and when I receive that answer from um, the executive director, I will pass that along to you. And I'll also ask town council to, to look into it. And then the last one is the Public Safety Special Purpose Stabilization Fund, which was discussed last week. I did add language allowing for um, operating, public safety operating costs to be paid from this as well.
I think it's fourteen, I think they all look good, I, I don't think any of them there. I mean, there's some I still question whether I might vote in favor or against, but then I think they all belong on the agenda and all are in a condition that belong. You know, are ready to move forward, I don't think, none of these look like giant placeholders that could look radically different by the time we get somewhere serious next week.
Yeah, I don't think there'll be radical uh, differences, I do know, um, based on history with town council, there will be some recommended, you know, language changes, which is fine. That's why we use them.
Right, and, and clarity sake languages doesn't change the intent of any of these articles.
So how long will town council take to complete this review?
Cuz this meeting is in one month and four days.
And you're meaning to vote the warrant is in one week, so it's going to be less than a week, it's.
Okay.
It's gonna be one week or less. Uh, Janelle has also confirmed her ability to attend the uh, special town meeting as well, just so you know.
Good.
Yeah, so I'll reach out tomorrow, first thing, and see if they can get on it, it's not a very long warrant, so hopefully, they can move.
Right.
All right, uh, thank you, Ms. Margaret, appreciate that. All right, uh, swinging back into new business, uh, next up, we did the conservation agent, uh, full-time highway driver laborer.
Okay, um, the only uh, notice of intent I'm gonna be giving you tonight is for. Um, Matthew to Shara, to the position of highway. Driver laborer, um, he will be filling Mike Hayes', um, Mike Hayes' uh, vacancy that he left. Um, and um, after speaking with Matthew today, I talked with him about a start date, we're looking at an anticipated start date of October eighteenth. Um, the start, at a starting rate of twenty-two ninety-nine. Um, the reason that he is on the upper end of grade five is because he's already coming with the licenses that are required for the grade above that. Um, it's just that we have to pay him, um, as a rate of uh, pay at higher, we have to pay him for the advert, for the job that was advertised. So he will be there after the completion of three, a, a three-month probationary period. Um, successful completion, I will recommend that he actually moved up, move up to the appropriate grade based on his licenses. So he would move to a grade six, um, heavy equipment operator driver laborer, and again, he's fully licensed for that position. Um, I think. So I have, Mary has drafted an offer letter for me to review and issue to Matt. Matt has not formally accepted the position, but verbally, he, um, he has committed to accepting it. And I expect to get the uh, the contingent offer letter to him tomorrow for his signature.
All right, is there a motion on the floor to accept Margaret's recommendation of full-time highway driver labor position?
So moved.
Second.
All right, uh, thank you, Ms. Margaret, appreciate all the work that you've done, Stone Eye.
Hawkins Eye.
Keith Eye.
Okay, great, thank you, and I will also have him come in with uh, with one of his supervisors to a future meeting, so you can meet, so you can meet Matt.
Nice, thank you. All right, uh, scooting down, TA recommendation to appoint Fred Cummings as acting highway and facilities superintendent.
All right, so I've put this recommendation in tonight's folder, um, as you know, we've had a vacancy in the position since uh, July ninth. Uh, Fred and Jim um, have uh, co-led the department and have really stepped up to the plate. Uh, over the past few months uh, to keep things moving despite the significant staffing shortage. Um, as I explained in the uh, in the uh, my recommendation to the board. Um, while a dual leadership structure has served the department and the. Um, while a dual leadership structure has served the department and the town well in the short term, it is not a sustainable long-term uh, solution. Therefore, um, I am recommending tonight that the Select Board appoint Fred Cummings to a six-month term as Acting Highway Su- Highway and Facility Superintendent. Effective November one through April thirtieth twenty-two, in twenty-twenty-two, and that he be paid a weekly salary commensurate with the FY twenty-two Superintendent appropriated Sally, salary paid each week. Um, paid each week of the fiscal year. So he will receive the equivalent weekly um, salary for the budgeted amount. Um, I also recommend that the town uh, re-advertise the permanent highway facility superintendent position in February twenty-twenty-two. And that any internal candidates, including Mr. Cummings, be allowed to submit their rev- resumes for consideration along with outside candidates.
Any questions?
Would, so he would be making the same as um, a permanent highway superintendent?
That's what my recommendation is, um, based on the budgeted amount this year. So it's not, and in anything in addition, it's the weekly salary that would have been established by um, the annual appropriation, the superintendent.
And, and is there um, is there over the allotted money uh, in there because we've uh, only had two?
There will be, yeah, there will be a remaining balance in that line. There, there definitely will be because um, there's going to be, you know, the equivalent of two months um, unused uh, funds from the salary line.
Well, that was my concern is that um, we would, we did actually come very close um, with what we were offering the last permanent highway superintendent. And I think maybe we may be a little bit low.
Yeah.
And so it would be good if there was some additional funds in that.
Yep. So you're going to see, so um, because um, because Fred will be paid on a, on a prorated basis, you're that that two, whatever it is, two months, three months now, um, e- equivalent salary appropriation is gonna remain in there. So, okay.
Okay.
Um, and also um, uh, Fred, during the time of this acting appointment, um, he will be an FLA, FLSA exempt employee, not eligible for overtime.
Right.
And, and we are still gonna keep the admin support, the few hours of admin support.
We're gonna, we're gonna stick with that. That's needed, yes.
Good. I, I agree it's needed. I just wanna make sure that, that this doesn't really disappear on this.
Yeah, yeah, it's just five hours, but it's something.
And promoting him to acting superintendent then creates a vacancy in the department?
Well, it leaves a vacancy in the department in uh, in that Fred's uh, regular position will remain vacant. So we are going to have to figure out how we are going to backfill that position on a temporary basis. And one of my thoughts, of course, is taking um, the currently vacant part-time position, uh, potentially adding more hours to make that a full-time position. So it'd be somewhat cost-effective and that you're not adding a full position. Um, and we may be able to look at doing something like that on a temporary basis, um, and then in FY twenty-three, a permanent basis.
Hmm, just seems a little tight.
It is tight. It's all tight.
Oh, it's tight, but we got it. We got it.
Well, you know, I, I um, I'm just concerned about a, a permanent um, position and whether we can afford that without having a new fiscal year and a new budget.
Uh, I, I mean, I, we still have, I believe, uh, a salary reserve in the budget and we have a, a reserve fund. And really, if we get to April and we hire someone that's a higher salary, we have both of those places to round out the rest of the fiscal year if we need to. Uh, we'd have to make sure, cuz sadly, it means that by the time we hire a permanent highway chief, the fiscal year twenty-three budget will have already been, will, will be finalized at that point.
Yeah, yeah. It'll be nearing completion. So I think what we need to do is we need to consult with the Personnel Committee as well uh, to determine what a market rate, uh, what market rate pay would be. And we should be um, we should be projecting that in the budget requests.
Right, I, I guess.
And uh, and with Amy listening in the audience, you know, thank you again for the time that you're putting in to help out uh, the highway folks. Uh, greatly appreciated. Um, can't thank you enough for stepping up and taking that on. So um, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Amy. While we're there. All right, so any more of the questions for uh, Margaret on this opportunity?
Oh, but is there a motion we should be making then to?
There is a motion that you should be making, yep, to uh, confirm Margaret's recommendation to refer, point, to a point, to a point Fred Cummings as Acting Highway and Facility Superintendent.
So moved.
Have a seat.
I like that, huh? Hey, I can, I can drink tea and read from the screen at the same time. All right, uh, Stoneeye.
Hawkins Eye.
Keith Eye.
All right, there you go, Margaret. Thank you. But thank you, Fred. Yay.
All right, thank you.
All right, so down to the introduction of the first of many drafts for the entertainment license policy and procedures.
Okay, so that showed as an introduction or introduce on the agenda. Um, instead, what I'd, what I'd appreciate is just a, a general discussion among the um, Select Board members as to what, you know, what you envision. Um, as far as creating this, this policy and procedure, so we could be sure to draft one that's, um, that's appropriate for Brolin.
Well. I mean, we all know that there's been lots of discussion, you know, I think we need to start thinking outside the box and um, you know, think about events uh, that happened at South Common. Uh, once we get that ADA money, we get that gazebo fixed, how's that positive thinking? Um, you know, entertainment that goes on it in the center of town, entertainment that goes on at the town hall, that goes on at, you know, nearby churches, traffic, et cetera. So I almost envisioned this as, you know, Margaret, as many uh, examples of entertainment licenses or entertainment policies that you can find, it's gonna be a little of this and a little of this and a little of this. And then we talk to people involved and then this changes to this and this changes to that. So I can't see it as a, oh my God, let's hurry up and get this done in two weeks type of process.
See, a- and the more I think about it, the more I think about, again, the number of events we have, uh, and the number of places that do events and what might or might not be included. And, and then the administrative burden this is gonna place on the town to process three or four, five hundred of these a year. Um, uh, scares me. And I'm finding myself less and less in favor of having an entertainment license policy procedure uh, than I was when I voted in favor of going down this path only a couple of weeks ago. Um, and so I keep trying to find ways that might be a middle ground where we can still have something, but not again, have five hundred applications that have six different departments having to, to vet things uh, where they could be doing other work for the town because we, we, I, I mean, I, I get that we had a problem uh, uh, sort of a little bit this year, but this might be just too much of an overkill to solve that particular issue. I mean, that particular issue that we had it, it, with the events, the center of town could be fixed maybe with some parking regulations. Uh, better defined sidewalk and curving, uh, so whether or not someone's parking on the road or parking in someone's grass is much more clearly defined. And some more open communications between, you know, neighbors, um, uh, between neighbors.
So I was, I was thinking the same sort of things, Scott, um, that perhaps um, there could be another meeting with neighbors and or um, the Nineteen Carter Board and Evy, and just have more of a discussion on how we can come to some kind of an agreement or help them come to some kind of an agreement with neighbors, whether it's like a memorandum of understanding or um, something along those lines. This is the specific um, item that brought this um, entertainment license up.
Right, but I think that you would also need to include um, members of the center church as well. You know, if you think of that triangle, uh, whether it's events at the church, whether it's events at the town hall, whether it's events at uh, uh, you know, parish hall, whether it's events at um, you know, the library.
You mean a meeting with all of those people? I think we just need to go between the people who had an issue, which were the neighbors and Nineteen Carter, which is who they had the issue with.
I see this more as like a venue um, type of, of discussion, and I don't wanna limit it just to Nineteen Carter, because I don't want anything to ever come back to the board to say, you know, we did this just for Nineteen Carter. We did this, you know, um, because of Nineteen Carter, you know, I'd rather have it as a more of a community thought-based, you know, if there's events, venues down at South Common, that that gets part of it too. Um, so for me, it's much more global than it is just in that small section of town.
Okay, I guess I'm just.
But I think you're still talking, good, cuz you're still talking bigger than, and, and then still going down a path of having an entertainment license policy and procedures.
I guess.
Where, where I, I think, where, where I think Chris and I are saying, maybe we shouldn't do that, we shouldn't have that at all. I mean, we have a master plan about what we'd like to see in the center of town. And I think, you know, I, matter of fact, I believe our master plan even specifically mentions Nineteen Carter doing the type of things they're actively doing.
Um, but maybe we just, some agreement between the neighbors and Nineteen Carter on this particular issue. That's all.
No, I'm, I'm definitely in agreement that, you know, there needs to be more discussion of what needs to uh, you know, be done, not be done. Um, you know, parking on one side, not parking on the other. Hey, you're on my grass. No, you're not on my grass. That's down, that's down grass. Uh, you know, type of thing. So it's.
So it's just a matter of respect, you know, having respect for each other.
And frankly, I, I walked down there this past week, uh, and, and especially on, on, especially there's, there are spots where where a town road be- begins and ends and where someone's private property is pretty nebulous. I mean, it goes from road edge to gravel to a little bit of a hill to some dirt to some grass. And where, where it's okay to park or where it's not okay to park. If I was parking to an event, I could easily say, oh, I want to be off the road. That puts me on the neighbor's grass or not. I, I don't know if that's really where it's okay or not okay. And I think if we did some improvements uh, to the town center, which we've always wanted to sort of do anywhere by adding some curbing and maybe even adding some sidewalks, where that's really easy to say, oh, my car should stop at the sidewalk. I should, I mean, on that curb, I should drive up on the grass. Where right now, I think you could drive on the grass and think you're doing the right thing.
Well, yeah, and I think it's just a matter, like I said, of respect for each other and have an understanding of um, you know, what, what would make both parties um, you know, happier and be able to get along.
No, um, Janet has her hand up. So Janet, if you can keep your comment brief, um, then we'll bring you on up to the front.
Hi, I, I just wanted to say that I was coming to her town this week. Um, and it wasn't, and not, Nineteen Carter wasn't even opened. And there was parking on both sides of the street. And I met a truck going very slowly coming down the hill uh, towards the center of town. And I was taking a right to go to Walnut Street. And we barely could get through because of my sideways.
Yeah, there you are. What, what, what was that hint, Janet? What gave you that hint?
Your head like this.
Yeah, okay.
So, um, I, I, I did have to like practically pull into the church to be able to allow this person to go by. And it wasn't anybody's one fault. It's just that people, like Scott said, they're trying to be courteous and not be on lawns. They're parking on both sides of the street. There is a sidewalk on the church side, so that already is, they're out into the street. And I, I, I'm gonna be honest, I'm not in favor of changing the traffic flow. I've been here almost sixty years and that triangle has been the same since I've been there. But um, I don't know, I, I, I I don't think it's just a Nineteen Carter thing. I think Peggy's right. It's a church thing. And and even back in the day when we had the first parish church in its glory days, there was more parking in the center of town than there ever is today on one day. And even that was very tight. So I, I appreciate what you're doing. And I don't know if you're actually gonna get an, an answer to, to it, but it, it is, it is a concern. And and I think the difference between now and thirty years ago is there's more traffic. And that's the, that, that's the bigger concern. That's all.
Thank you. Uh, and I think one thing that we need to keep in mind too is a, is a safety factor. You know, if you're trying to scoop down Woodward or um, you know, Carter, and you've got cars on both sides of the road, and here comes our brand-new big old pumper truck, is it gonna fit? Is it gonna fit going down Walnut if you have traffic on both sides of the road? So um, yeah, you know, Chris, kinda to your point, you can talk about being courteous and being kind and being respectful to your neighbors. But if I'm parking here and you're parking there and a big old truck needs to get through and it can't, then where does that fall back on us, you know?
And I don't think an entertainment license would solve that problem.
Well, I mean, what an entertainment license, but you might talk about parking.
Yeah, but, but it's gonna say obey parking laws. So they're all, everyone who's parking is parking a- according to parking laws.
What about Margaret, the um, study that uh, may be addressing sort of the center of town?
Oh, the Village Center Strategic Plan?
Right.
I have to check on the status of that. I don't know where that's, where that's at. I know that there was um, yeah, they had lost the grant funding to continue it, uh, but there was some sort of agreement. They were gonna put together a proposal to continue the study through LPA hours. So I've gotta check with Tim on that and find out, find out where uh, where uh, CMRPC is.
Well, I mean, regardless, I think that the parking sort of is a different issue than trying to have uh, the neighbors of Nineteen Carter and Nineteen Carter get along or.
Well, and, and I.
Understanding.
I think there, cuz there's a bucket of issues. Some issues might be solvable, easy. And we might not want to wait till all issues are solved before we take care of some of that, you know, that Walnut Street, there is not a, a big street. Uh, I, I, I think the uh, I, I think Nineteen Carter's even put out a non-enforceable sign that says, please don't park here. It might not take much for the town to turn that into a no parking zone. We now have parking regulations. And so we could decide a stretch right there where the neighbor doesn't want people parking, where Nineteen Carter's agreed is not a great place to park because it, it limits visibility, becomes a no parking area.
Yeah, and again, it's a, it's a, that's a public, that becomes a public safety issue. If there's parking on both sides of that street, it becomes a public safety issue. So something has to be addressed there.
And so, good. I was gonna say that, 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 that maybe it's, I don't know, it's a, the Select Board filling in the uh, uh, traffic forms that we have for the traffic advisory committee to say, we would like one side, I, I, I would list others about which side is better of, of Walnut around Nineteen Carter to be one-sided parking.
Yeah.
And no parking's on one side.
I mean, I think this is, this is probably now a good time that um, this is coming up, you know, where it's getting colder. Uh, there won't be a lot of events outside, hopefully, except for those party folks who dress warmly and go out there. So probably timing is on our side before, you know, Scott, as you said, um, you know, that this circles around again. Was it just because, hey, first year out of the pandemic? Woo-hoo, everyone outside, much safer outside than inside a building. Um, you know, don't know. Um, you know, and then obviously as events happen at Nineteen Carter, you know, we need to look at their capacity uh, as well, you know, however many, you know, people inside that you can have that. So it's um, again, I don't see this as a, we're gonna talk about this tonight and then we're never gonna talk about it again. Um, you know, it's gonna keep coming up until we can come up with some sort of um, decision.
Right, cuz I also think this is just the beginning. I mean, Nineteen Carter, I think, is the first of the buildings and town center to really start coming back and doing things. But hopefully, First Parish Church is gonna start doing a lot more events. Hopefully, uh, eighteen-seventy Town Hall will go back to the, you know, dozens of events a, a month that they were doing before. Uh, there's huge hope that someday Bullard House is a place that people go to as well. Uh, and, and so uh, we, we should be thinking about generally how we keep that going and support all of those places. I, I mean, uh, the church and Nineteen Carter are not town properties, but are definitely cultural touchstones, important places to this town that is, is very important to a lot of things that people do here. It's a finding way that both respects the, the neighbors uh, who still live in the center of town and we, we want people still living there. Uh, and allow Nineteen Carter to, to have, and the church and eighteen-seventy Town Hall to thrive.
Right, right. I think we have um, multiple um, issues um, that we need to address. And it doesn't mean that I'm against an entertainment um, license. It's just that I don't think that's gonna help the Nineteen Carter uh, issue um, that we have.
Well, this is why I wanted the Select Board to have this discussion. I mean, we, we need to, we need to have a foundation for, for how we're going to proceed, you know, with this. And I, you know, I will um, because the, the board is. the board is the chief policy body in town, uh, you know, I'll proceed with however the select board um would like me to proceed on behalf of the town, so um.
I I mean, I can make the suggestion that Margaret um perhaps either meet, like I said before, with neighbors and or nineteen Carter um like we like we did before and see if we can come to some conclusion there. I I think people that are emailing us also have this misconception that we're against.
Yeah.
And it's not that at all, it's not that at all, we're just trying to work out um what's best, you know, uh uh so that both sides can understand each other. And that basically how you do that, I guess, is to try to get them to talk with each other and or maybe um have a moderator like Margaret was doing at the last meeting.
Yeah, and and I had had a conversation with a resident in town as well today, um, you know, about this and said, I don't know how the misconception got started that, you know, the board was out to shut nineteen Carter down, that is the furthest thing from the truth, you know, we are out to um, you know, listen to the concern of the neighbors, you know, on the side, in the back, on the other side of what's going on, so um, you know, somewhere along the way that misinformation got out, or that's what it got turned into a, uh, you know, a very um ugly suggestion of, you know.
Uh, I mean, I think when we contemplate at the entertainment license, you know, the nineteen Carter's an all volunteer group, if they do two hundred events a year and suddenly have to fill out two hundred of these forms every year require five site visits from five different departments, that is an administrative burden that they can't handle, it's also an administrative word, I don't think the town should has the capacity to handle, and that's just one entertainment site. If we start doing, you know, uh, all the things the school does and night and and uh uh, the council on aging and and the First Parish Church and Saint Joseph's and uh I mean.
Not to mention the private establishments.
Right, right, and 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 frankly, I think that ye- yes, nineteen Carter uh uh does some events that that's um neighbors found loud, but there are like pool parties and backyard barbecues that are much louder and much later. There are much more newso's, and I don't imagine those people are gonna be filling out entertainment licenses for those. Uh, and and that that we could think of of uh uh how to address some of those as well. And if I started thinking, we started getting a thousand of these a year, you know, then we we need like seven full-time staff, you'll just to respond to our our entertainment licenses.
Yeah, um, so I mean, what do you, what Peggy and Scott, what do you think about um having Margaret doing another meeting and like I did before, I'd be happy to sit in all, pretty much, I just sat there and was able to observe, and I did answer a question or two that came up that I could answer.
I think that everyone, and I just wanna be clear that, you know, I know I've we I've talked about this meeting and and folks that were there know, you know, how the meeting went, I just did my best to facilitate, you know, productive conversations between the neighbors and the representatives of nineteen Carter, everyone had a chance to to say what they, you know, what they needed to say, what they wanted to say. Um, so maybe it's time now to see if we can start getting some.
We something could be, as Peggy pointed out, that we're we're in the fall now, there are no current outdoor concert schedule that I that I know of.
And I think really basically COVID may be why, COVID may be why these were all outdoor concerts. You know, week after week after week, and I don't think it's been that way in the past with nineteen Carter. So probably it may not be that way again next year unless everybody insists that they be outside and weekly.
Well, but it's also, there's a lot of places that did things just for COVID, and with COVID gone, discovered that there's a better way, they could discover they like outdoor concerts better than they like indoor concerts starting this summer, and uh and so it could be a conversation of what is the expectation for next summer?
Right.
Uh, and and if there's going to be some issues, talking about it now where they have three months to adjust or six months to adjust plans and adjust timing and to other things like that, it's easier to do it now than after the event has a sign out that says the event goes from time A to time B on this day, then it gets really hard to make adjustments to it, but now when it's a theoretical event, again, maybe it is a good time to have another conversation, it's sort of a postmortem, uh uh, and maybe a a little bit of time, we let a little time rest, and so that we do this in you know, November sometime, a, how did it go, what we, what do we want to see done differently, and what are the plans for next year?
Well, and I, but I I think before we go back to the public, you know, Margaret, I don't know, do you need to gain some type of input from uh, I don't know, Richard, Fire Marshal, uh, you know, police to get their feeling on some sort of what their involvement would be, you know, kind of getting back to Scott's comment of we don't wanna be doing this every week, do we just do it annually, is it a uh, can you come up with a blanket, you know, you know, template type of thing, I don't know.
Nor do I. I don't, I don't know, I yeah, nineteen Carter um is fi- has filed an appeal of the building commissioner's determination on that zoning noise bylaw. Um, so, you know, this is also gonna give us time to see how that um, you know, how that plays out, but uh, that that shouldn't stop us from having a conversation with the parties again, so I'm.
No, I I thought that was a weird uh uh ruling, sort of anyway, I mean, the bylaw talks about construction noise, not entertainment noise. And we don't, and we don't enforce it for, again, the pool parties that happen in town, the barbecues that happen in town, the graduation parties in town. I mean, there are Fridays and Saturday nights that I can sit in my backyard way up here in Sorry Hill and hear things that are clearly on the other side of town that are going uh going quite loud and and uh.
You know, ultimately, I, no pun intended, I'd like people to be able to live in harmony or coexist in harmony. You know, if there's some, you know, and and if we could help facilitate that, then I think that would be a good thing.
Right, so then Margaret, um, go ahead, Scott.
No, you were about to summarize, see, I think you could summarize better.
Well, no, I was just gonna say, so um, I mean, I think we're all coming at this from from different angles, which is very good. That uh, you know, we're not all in unison as yay, let's go forth and do this, that maybe we just kinda summarize with some bullet points as to next steps, um, you know, that each of us would like to see, and then go back and figure out what the next plan of attack is, you know, so again, this type of information can be brought back out to the public, so uh, you know, the people who live around nineteen Carter don't think that they were just given, um, you know, what I received lip service uh for this, that the people at nineteen Carter know that, no, we're not shutting you down, so, you know, calm down on that, um, you know, and here's our plans going forward, so people can have an opportunity to come forth and talk and voice their opinion and feel that they're in a very safe environment, you know, to to do so.
I think it, the longer it goes on, though, uh, I don't think it's a good idea, I think, you know, I don't think we should wait too long before there's.
No, no, I don't either, but.
I think I've already voiced my opinion, if you, you know, have something else that you wanna offer, or Scott.
Now, from my, from from my standpoint, I just wanna be clear on the board's expectations, you know, I I I answer to the board and and I know that there are differences of opinion, uh but I am getting the common uh message that um another, another meeting um with the stakeholders uh might be a good idea to see if we can kind of facilitate some some resolution.
Right, you know, and and maybe, Margaret, we come back with some suggestions, you know, to talk about parking, to talk about uh, yeah, if you have an outside venue, you know, you don't have the amplification, um, you know, out there, I don't know. Just things that people may not think about that you can toss out there, that there's now general discussion on.
I thought the um, the email that we got today, I believe the guy's name was Seth, was pretty good about um some of the things that um he talked about amplification and um you know, that that is some, some of the different things that concerning the neighbors and um
Right.
um, you know, might be something that you, you know, we could come to an agreement between the neighbors and and um the board at nineteen Carter.
Right. And I, and I truly would hope, you know, Chris, to your point that, you know, everybody does get along and everybody does respect it, and, you know, I I say that I'm going to do, but then I turn around and do, uh, you know, that we we stop that from happening, because it's just gonna cause this.
There is, there is going to, there is going to have to be, there's gonna have to be some reasonable compromise. Um, you know, no, no one individual, no one party is gonna get everything they want, if they want to.
Yep. Absolutely agree.
It's give and take.
Yep, there's gonna be some give and take, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so, you know, Margaret, I don't know if you wanna check your schedule, so we can get the word out, um, you know, to have a have a meeting, um, you know, Chris, I know that you go, but I'd really like to go too, so I don't know if we label that as a unintentional uh meeting of, you know, to selectmen, it almost sounds like a joke, to selectmen walked into a room uh, you know, type of thing, just so that, you know, there's more ears to hear uh conversations that go on.
Well, I can always bring back whatever I hear.
Or the alternative would be to post a select board meeting, and you'd have a select board meeting with the with the parties as well.
Well, I, you know, I I really thought it worked out well when I didn't say anything unless I was you know, I I do, because um I wa- I wasn't there to you know, back one side or the other, I just wanted to hear what people had to say. And, you know, Peggy and I could both go, and we could post a meeting just to go, but I think it is, it was a good idea just to listen. You know, unless we're asked a question.
Right, it'll be like a pseudo coffee talk, you know, we all happen to be there at the same place, but we're not deliberating, we're not voting, you know, you just now have three sets of ears. Uh, you know, that are potentially there.
Okay.
Cool, all right, thank you, Margaret, appreciate that, bringing it up.
All right, I will um, I will look at my schedule in the near future.
Okay, all right, um, and then finally, we are on board questions, comments, liaison updates.
I'm good.
All right, I have four questions, um, Margaret, one of them goes back to you, did we ever get any hits for um snowplow driver people?
We got a couple, um. Yeah, we are, we are still with the local people, we got a couple on indeed.com on not from, you know, not from communities that are very close by, so um makes it a little difficult, I mean, um, I've passed those along, but.
Okay, all right, um, sticking with highway, how is the license process going for the other um?
Yep.
Gentlemen on highway?
Yep, so next, is it this Thursday, this Thursday, um, our newest um highway department member is gonna be going for his CDL um, the CDL learner's permit.
Nice, right.
Yep.
All right, um, this question came up this time last year, and I forgot to bring it up uh last Monday, and was asked about it on Saturday when I was at the dump. The Lions, the Berlin Lions, and plugging their trees in on the church property. Um, apparently, there's still issues with the outlets, and the unknown or unanswered question of who's responsible for ensuring that the outlets work, is it church because it's on church property, is it Berlin because Berlin pays the bill? I'm assuming Berlin pays the electric bill, I don't know, but I've been um asked to find out.
All right, well, I'm, you know, this is something I'm gonna have to ask Fred and Jim to assist with, since they are highways and highways and facilities, so I will have to ask them um to to check on it and uh
Okay.
see if we can get an electrician out there to fix it.
All right, and I don't even know what the problem is, Margaret, it was just um, hey, I think there's something wrong with the outlets, and I had a bunch of extension cords, and they were running all over the place, and I was putting rugs over them, so people wouldn't trip, and that's not really safe, you know, type of thing, so I said I would.
Well, yeah, let me get some feedback from uh Jim and Fred, they would at least be able to advise.
All right, and then I'll be sending around again my uh monthly Clinton item submission, I wanna add a few more things with the addition of the um conservation agent and highway guy and highway guy and veteran services guy to put that in there.
Oh, that sounds so good, that sounds so good.
Doesn't it?
Oh, my god.
Yep, it does, it does, uh, you know, and let people know of what we're going after next, so um, you know, it can quell some of the, oh my god, what's going on comments that you're seeing on Facebook, you know, happened to the town of Berlin, why are people leaving, it's like, well, open up any town, I don't know what newspapers you read, but Boylston's short, Clinton's short, Lancaster's short, you know, on people, and look at the website, and there's a ton of openings, so I I will get that around, cuz Scott, you're not gonna be here next week, right?
I am not, because I tried really hard to make my vacation go from a Tuesday to a Wednesday, so I'd only miss one meeting, and then totally forget about Columbus Day, that's all. I am gone next Tuesday.
Okay.
So I'm gonna miss two meetings.
All right, and, okay, so yes, or.
I'll have some internet connectivity, but there's no way of making meetings, I'm off several times a, so.
Don't, no, it's fine, so is it next Tuesday or the Tuesday after, which is Columbus Day?
Next Tuesday.
Next to, next Monday is Columbus Day.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so we're not meeting on the eleventh, but we're meeting on the twelfth, same bat time, same bat channel, seven o'clock. All right, okay, I'm gonna write that down, so so Chris isn't alone by herself, where's Peg? All right, um.
Peg, you don't show up on Monday, and I'm the only person on the field.
Yeah. You got everything taken care of by vote, all right, um, so I think we are good with that, so I will entertain a motion to close out our meeting, and Scott, wish you the best of vacation, be safe, have fun, and bring you some tan lotion.
Yeah, both of them.
All right.
Uh, so move, adjourned.
Second.
All right, stone eye.
Buckets eye.
Keef eye.
All right, good night, everyone, thank you.
Thank you, everybody, good night.
I should have the cast off next time you see me.